Okay, good morning, and we'll call the meeting into order for the day. The first item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda with an addition, it looks like, of budget review.
I move to approve the addition.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, approved minutes of the August 4th and 11th, 2015 meetings.
With approval.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to pay, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Motion and a second to pay bills and vouchers, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, our eight thirty-five item, request to repurchase tax forfeit property, Mr. Gus Johansson. Mister Johansson, you can come up.
Good morning, Nancy.
Who may you be now?
Nancy.
Gus.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good one.
Yeah.
Morning, Nancy.
Mister Johansson had two parcels of property that forfeited to the state. He was served, no, he wasn't served, he had a certified letter mailed to him, which is one of the ways we have to, you know, announce to people that the property's going forfeit. The property was served in a manner that is, I say, a string of contention between our county attorney and Mister Johansson's attorney. We thought the best way to take care of this forfeiture is to have him repurchase the property with your approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Mister Johansson, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I just think it all could have been prevented if the county attorney would have returned my calls, but wait, no. Left four messages and nobody ever called.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Maybe your administrator, do you have anything to add on this? This issue?
I-
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about Mister Johansson just said.
Oh, no, no, Mister Chair.
But-
Mister Chair and Commissioner Ingersoll, we've had quite a bit of discussion back and forth, the city has engaged us in it, they have communicated with the auditor's office and feel that this is the proper way to handle this. Kevin?
Yeah, Mister Chair, I, you know, I noticed here in Nancy's memo to us that one of the two criteria need to be established here and one of them is, that is in the best interest of the county that be repurchased and I certainly believe that to be the case, to get this thing back to current and back in the tax rolls.
Yep.
So, based on that, I would, I would move that we approve the, do you have a resolution here, Nancy, by chance?
Pardon?
Did you, did you have a resolution for us to do or? I would just move then that we approve the repurchase of those lots by Mister Johansson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, the total amount due is forty-two thousand, eight dollars and thirty-two cents, that's, we're all in agreement on the amount. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
Yeah. Okay, let's see, Rhonda's next, why don't we do some committee reports, Wayne, you want to start?
Mister Chair, I have no committee reports this week.
Frank?
Wednesday, when the Hallie, they had some question on the Red River Dispatch Center and stuff like that, that they want clarification on and Brian Green and Brian Burke went along down there and they described it pretty well, I mean, they went through the Armor Radio and the Red River Dispatch and I think they gave Hallie group a very good explanation how it works, why we're doing it that way and stuff like that, it seemed to me like they agreed with it, so I hope, hopefully they will commit to paying their part of the, part of the bill, so that was, it was a good meeting. Thursday, I started off with Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus, I went through the ITV thing, but wasn't working very good, I mean, I couldn't quite really understand them and I left there and I went to the Heartland Trail where we had a meeting out at the Sign Center in Moore's State to find out what they're gonna do with that, what their plans are, because we're interested in going across it with the Heartland Trail. And they seemed very receptive in coming up with some sort of trail to go through that thing, so, I mean, they realized the biggest problem is getting across the rail with drags and stuff like that, but they seemed very receptive to having a staging area there and stuff like that, so, there's a very good meeting there too, so I think the Heartland Trail, it'll be easy to work with it with the Heartland Trail with the, with the Sign Center and I guess they're gonna be doing some archery, some diggings there and stuff like that, that's why, what they're converting some of that stuff to, into the Sign Center. Yesterday, we went with the Mental Health Subcommittee for the jail, had a meeting there yesterday afternoon and we had a good discussion there and I guess some of the main things that came out of there is what type of programs that we really need, you know, are we, you know, when you start talking about mental issues, you know, it's gonna involve so many other things, you know, I mean, to do the mental issues in a jail, you know, you got so many programs that have become involved and that like that, so, I was, we were sort of concerned that probably we should, the regular jail committee, whether we could make that a committee as a whole, I think, I mean, not that we want to be on the committee and say, have any say on it, but could we sit in at some of the committees without being called, in some, sit in some of the meetings, so we become more knowledgeable what's going on there, you know, to see what the space, space is gonna be like that, you know, and I don't know what your feelings are, Grant and Kevin, you're on that committee and I just, you know, we made that a committee as a, I don't know what you'd call it, committee as a whole or whatever and-
Frank and I both agree on this, I think that the more up to speed we all can be, the easier it is in the planning process, I just, it's, it's really hard for us to talk about how we envision space and programming needs if we are just coming into the meetings now, really.
No, I mean, I just wanted to get your feelings on that, to see what your feelings are, it's opening up, I know we do that at FMCog, because Fargo has more members than everybody else and if all their members show up, they, they have a quorum.
Right.
You know, so, they just say it's, this is gonna be a meeting, you know, and they, they post it that, that way, you know, so, I was just wondering whether we could post it that way when we-
Well, I, you know, I, I think the, Mister Chairman, in terms of us turning that building committee into a committee, the whole meeting-
Probably that's the wrong word, I just wanted, if we show up-
Those are, those are, those are planning meetings that really should fall outside of a public meeting. There's, there's, there can be things that we need research done on, things like that before it goes to the public. You know, it was, it was, it took us a long time to be ready to talk about, you know, some potential buyouts of properties to the north of the campus, but, you know, what, I think what's important is that, and Brian, we have what, do we have two, do we have two people that are on the Mental Health Committee that also serve on the building committee or?
Three.
There's three. You know, so, you know, I, you know, I think there's, there needs to be a way to relay what your committee is doing to the building committee, and so what's the best way to do that without end up having all of these things, public meetings is-
Yeah.
You know, we've been on schedule to have these meetings every three weeks, you know, so.
Well, the one question that came up in two, that is also the mental, is that the right word for this, this committee is the mental health, I realize that's a big issue, but in order to satisfy the mental health part of it, there's so many different programs that become involved, you know, the, the spiritual programs, the financial programs, the re, re, bringing them back-
Reintegration.
Reincineration or whatever that-
Reintegration.
-big word is, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, there, all those programs become involved in order to keep the mental health off the prisoners, you know, so there, probably, we're, probably, we're not having the right committee, we're probably not called the right committee as far as a mental health issue, you know, I mean, who's looking at all those other programs, you know, and stuff, you know, I realize your committee's looking at the buildings, you know, the doors, windows, walls, whatever you wanna call that, you know, but there's so many different issues, programs that we have to get involved with the prisoners that, I don't know, we need pro- Got a question whether we're really called the right thing there, you know, it's mental health or, we need to have some more insight in what's going on, I guess, to, you know, it's just not a couple of rooms for mental health, you know, we need different things too.
Well, I think, you know, I think part of what needs to be done is, is a research into not, not only what, what we, what the facility needs, primarily what we were looking for, wanting out of this group is, is to make sure that the building design was capable of being structured to handle the mental health issues. Then there becomes another issue then, as to down the road, do we do all of that programming internally or do we do it externally like we do right now, where you have, where we have outside people coming in to, to do the counseling and so on and so forth? So, do we end up in the future, do we have those as county employees or do we continue on in that respect? So, there's, there's a number of different things to look at there, but the facility is, and I, you know, and I think, you know, the fact of the matter is, is, is we've got two very capable, knowledgeable people that deal with it on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah.
And that's our, our jail superintendent and the assistant, who know what they, have a pretty good idea of what, what the facility needs are, you know, so, again, it's just making sure that there isn't anything left down, because, and Julie also serves on that committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, it's the main thing that we're concerned about now, is just the building, I mean, are, should we be talking about mental health already, you know, or all these programs, you know, or are we just talking about, let's get the building built and?
We, we need to make, make sure that that facility has the appropriate space or needs to be able to provide the programming within the facility.
Well, that's, that's true, I mean, but do we do the mental, we're gonna do the mental health, what about the kitchen, what about this and stuff, is there a committee for all that, you know?
Well, that, that's-
Or don't we need this committee that I'm, that we're on, you know?
No, the, the mental health component is something new that we have never really discussed before, and that's why this committee was established, to research what would be needed for this facility to do a better job with dealing with-
Yeah, well, and I agree with-
-mental health issues.
We do have to do a better job and, and, not that they're not doing a good job now, but we have to do a good job with the mental health, but if you're gonna deal with mental health, you have to deal with a whole bunch of other things that involve mental health, you know, that, there's spiritual things there.
Sure. It's all programmed.
Well, maybe we can do, have some more discussions about how we can, you know, maybe narrow the focus on this, but, you know, I think what we, we do wanna continue to make sure that we're addressing that mental health issue in terms of our new jail, because it is a major issue for our jail and statewide and so, you know, it's something we have to continue to, to deal with, so.
Mister Chair, regarding the Mental Health Committee, I think it would be a good idea, not today, but maybe in a future meeting, to appoint one of the co-chairs of the Adult Local Advisory Council on Adult Mental Health, which I sit on, and possibly a consumer within that group.
Who is the chair? We did add a couple of people.
The chair is Ben, co-chairs are Ben Erie and Allison Wolbeck. I would suggest Allison Wolbeck, she is also a consumer and is one of our most active members, she's involved at the state level. Not necessarily today, but that's something those of you on that committee would like to consider, I think she would be a very excellent addition to have regarding mental health. Thank you.
Thanks. Frank, anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
I also went out to the city of Holly to meet with their city council, to listen to the presentation based on the dispatch and the fees and whatnot, and I think we've come to a, a pretty good agreement with them. The Land Management Committee of the Diversion Authority last week, I really appreciate, there's a bunch of transparency with the new information that we were given regarding the approval process and acquisition philosophies and, and frankly, I think that's something that should have been done a long time ago, but I appreciate that now that's being included in our meetings, and I was on that meeting yesterday, Mental Health Jail Subcommittee, and, and just from my perspective, we need all of the commissioners to be on board of this jail, jail project and, and Frank and I are appreciative of, of the fact that we're addressing some of those mental health needs with this project, but it's, it's pretty hard to not be in any of the planning stages and all of a sudden be on this Mental Health Subcommittee trying to, to decide what space needs are, and so that's, I think, where our conversation comes about including as many of us as possible in, in those planning processes. I understand that, that we don't necessarily want things to go out in the public, but in order for all of us to support this project a hundred percent, we need to be in on those planning processes. And that's the end of my report.
Kevin?
The only meeting that I had last week was the Diversion Authority meeting and the biggest, you know, there was, there were some big downtown project financing, or financial projects that were approved, some pretty significant dollar amounts that are gonna deal with the Second Street Levy and, and some of, some of that stuff, so, that was the big thing, there was discussion about some language between the Land Management Committee and the Finance Committee and we got those resolved out, so, everybody was happy, but I do, there was, it was brought up, I had received a call, oh, probably two weeks ago, from a resident in this staging area in Clay County, who had previously been approved for a hardship buyout by the Diversion Authority, and that approval was done probably about six months ago approximately, and so she was wondering, that she hadn't heard anything as to why nothing was moving forward with it when the other hardship ones had all been done, and I told her that I wasn't sure, but I, I was under the assumption that it was due to the DNR's position that nothing can be done on the project or no buyouts can happen in, in the county until the EIS is done, is finished. Having said that, we talked about it at the Diversion Authority meeting and apparently this, this hardship scenario is worsening for, for the family and they really don't know what to do, and so the Diversion Authority agreed that we would, we would certainly move forward with the, we'd be willing to move forward with the purchase of the property under the hardship rules and regulations, provided that the DNR agrees with it and approves it. And so I think this morning here, you have a, a draft letter to the DNR that basically discusses the discussion that the Diversion Authority had and the motion that was made to send in writing to the, to the DNR a request for consideration for the, for this hardship buyout to take place, and the draft of the letter here is signed, or, you know, it shows as Brian Burke, Clay County Administrator is the one sending the letter, but I would, I would think would be good if that came from both the Board Chair as well as Brian Burke is the Clay County Administrator with also the subheading underneath that is the Hardship Committee Chair, it was, it was Brian's committee that recommended to the Diversion Authority to go forward with this buyout, and I, I think we just need to do everything that we can for, for these people, all the other hardship cases, you know, kinda happened before all of this DNR, this DNR issue blew up, so.
Sure.
I would, I would move that we send, send this letter to the DNR.
Do we have a copy of this letter?
Yeah, you've got it, I think you were, you were given it this morning, you should have been given it this morning.
Part of that motion would be with the chair.
Yes.
Second, motion?
We have motion and a second to send the letter, any further discussion?
I think part of the viewpoints on the Minnesota leaders on the Land Management Committee was that nothing interfere with, with the DNR's thought process in regards to the EIS, and so, if this goes along with their requirements, I will support it as well.
That's, that's the only way that the Diversion Authority will, will move forward with it, is if it receives the, if it receives the, the approval of the DNR, and then there still is a secondary question about, about the lawsuit, or not the lawsuit, but the judge's ruling, we'd have to make sure then, after the DNR approves it, that it would still not go against the judge's ruling on the stipulations that he has, so, so this would be the first step.
No, we're talking about buying some more property, right?
Yes.
And I, I know about a month ago or something like that, we had to do some cleanup, I mean, is this part of a, I mean, on these new properties that we purchase and move out, is there cleanup involved in all this or is there, I mean, evidently the other property we purchased, there was no cleanup on it and we had to pay for it then.
It depends on, it depends on what, you know, I'm assuming if there's a residential area and if it cannot be at some point protected with a levy system or whatever, then it would have to be demolished and there would be cleanup, but that, that won't, that part won't happen now till after the EIS is complete and that would be then paid for by the Diversion Authority, just like we did the cleanup on this other one to be reimbursed by the Diversion Authority.
Oh, we're gonna be reimbursed, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Mister Chairman, that concludes my committee.
I guess I have one comment quickly, the Diversion Authority will be paying taxes on the properties in Minnesota that they-
They own it, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I just, let's see, I had Area Agency on Aging meeting yesterday and we had our audit report presented to us and everything's in order there and we're still moving forward on our transitioning to, to one agency for Land of the Dancing Sky and we'll have more information on that probably next week. MRCC, we had, we discussed what issues we might wanna bring forward next year to the legislature for rural counties and we're, that's an ongoing discussion, we'll be doing more in the next few months, and we had a presentation on economic development for rural counties and a presentation by Bowser on the buffer zone issues going on in the state, and that was it for me. Rhonda, come on up. I'll get you.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Morning, Rhonda.
Morning. The first item I have on the agenda, I do have a handout for. Yep. All right. This is, this document, the first page is the document that the Department of Human Services is requesting us to complete and submit for the child protection funds that we've been talking about over the last couple of months, it does require board review and board signature, so I wanted to go through with you how I completed this and see if you would approve how it's laid out. So, the first page, the middle grid there, just simply wants us to indicate, the intended use of these funds was primarily for staff, however, they do have allowances where you can use it on the service side as well, so they wanted to, counties to submit a budget for 2015 and 2016. So, the, on the middle grid there, I've indicated the 3.5 staff that we've been talking about and then the costs, but maybe we'll flip to the second page and go through the itemization and then the first page will be more clear. So, on the second page, on the left-hand side, the 2015 budget and itemization, if you recall, in May, the board approved hiring 2.5 child protection staff, so, on the grid there, I have the first FTE and the amount that we'd be spending for her, now I do have a caveat at the bottom, because I wanted to be very clear to DHS that we brought the staff on in May and I'm not considering our costs from May through June, only our costs from July through December, because the Department of Human Services bulletin said that they wouldn't approve any staff, staff hired prior, so, I wanted to be very clear what we're doing and I'm hopeful they'll approve it, and if not, we'll send it to our legislators. So, FTE one and two, we have there and the amount that we'd be spending, the staff that was more recently approved and, and her cost, she was actually, she actually started on Monday, and then the .5 FTE, we are in the process of getting that position hired and would intend to have that person on in September. The allowable use of the funds are for equipment and overhead as well, and so you'll see what I budgeted there. Bringing on four new staff, obviously we've had to adjust some offices and so we have four offices that actually have nothing in there, there's no modular furniture, we've moved in some steelcase desks, so we have two providers that are coming to give us quotes on how to set them up for those staff, so we would intend to use this year's funds to get those offices set up as well. So, and then, in addition to staffing, we did indicate the 73,000 that we would intend to spend on increased child protection services, and really what that is, is what we're already spending, it's out-of-home placements, so, we just itemized that in there for utilization of the 2015 funds. And then in 2016, the utilization of the full allocation, 257,000, is really eaten up by all the staff that would be approved, so that's how I laid that out for 2016.
So, is this just a two-year program then, or what?
It's ongoing funding, but this, this documentation is just for the two years, so we'll have to do this every year.
Kevin?
Mister Chairman, thank you. Rhonda, so the 2016 budget, you know, we, we go from the July to December, 132.6 to the 257, that makes sense because it's for a full year versus six months, but why, why wouldn't we still be including the 73 over to the right then, in addition?
But why, why wouldn't we still be including the 73 over to the right then in addition?
Well, because we're using it all up on the staff. So the, the full intent was to use the, our full allocation on staffing, but because these funds, we got them in July, we really only have one year to show how we might use that full allocation. Well, we brought the staff on mid-year, so you know, we don't have as many allocation or as much expenditures for the staff. So, but we're gonna, we're already seeing an increase in out-of-home placements, so we're just documenting that, you know, we're going to have an increase, so the money will be used to support those out-of-home placements. Does that make sense?
Rhonda, you need a motion from this board to forward this?
Right. It needs to be submitted to the Department of Human Services by the end of the month and they-
So move.
Brian?
Well, Mr. Chair, when you have a second, I guess I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I, I think to, to go back to Commissioner Campbell's question on the 73,000 out-of-home placement, you're using up all the funds, but what you're indicating is that out-of-home placements will probably increase with these additional child protections officers possibly because you've seen an increase.
Yeah.
But the increase that we're paying for 2015 will not be carried over because there's not adequate funds for, from the state in order to assist with those out-of-home placements, correct?
Well, with or without the money, our out-of-home placements are increasing.
I hope our out-of-home placements don't go up just because we added more staff.
Unfortunately, that's what happens though.
Better not.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, that's okay.
It should happen because it needs to happen.
Yeah. Out-of-home placements are increasing regardless of staff or funds, they just are, and it's one of those things that we are ending up having to pay for. So in, in fact, 2014, we saw quite a jump. It would have been nice if we could have compared our 2013 and then we could have said we need to allocate more of these funds to out-of-home placements. But what it appears is they're going to compare our spending in 2014 in our service areas to our spending in 2015, while we already had high placements here in, in 2014 and they're continuing in 2015, so.
Can you, a question?
I just, can I have some clarification? I was under the understanding that we were hiring these people because the money was authorized at the state level.
Correct.
Now, when I see this, we're not including that, we did hire them ahead of that May date, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I thought we were still seeking reimbursement on those salaries prior to that.
Well, we're getting the money. We already got the $205,000. So we're getting the money. The reason I put the statement down here is because in the out-of-home placement service area, that 73,000, we're going to spend irregardless of money. So my thinking was to make it very clear to the Department of Human Services that we would, we won't include those funds that we paid staff from May, the two staff from May to the end of June. So it's just the two staff and budget it in the service side because we're spending it anyway. So in my view, it, it, I thought it would be a more reasonable sell to them that, wait a minute, we understand that the funds didn't get allocated till July, so we're not going to use, we're not going to budget them in that regard. But even if we change this and we put their funds up on the top grid for salaries starting in May, those two, then I would reduce the 73,000. So either way, I'm indicating that we're going to spend the full amount.
So, so what you're saying is that the 73,000 would have been less had we gotten the reimbursement from May and June?
Uh, no, it would have been expenditures that we had irregardless of the funds. So, let's see, how do I explain? So one of the things that they're going to look at, there's two things they're going to look at for the funds. One is all of our expenditures in what they call these 1,000 brass code series. So, but they're going to compare, what did you spend in those 1,000 brass code series to what you spent in 2015? And that difference, they, it's that non-supplanting. They want to show that you're not getting this $205,000 and then you're reducing your expenditures overall. So they're going to compare the service end and the staff end and they look at it on our, what's called a SEGA report. So when we laid out for the cost for all the staff, that I could legitimately say, these are new staff, these are not supplanting old staff, they're not rehires when someone left and came back. These are brand-new staff that we allocated to child protection. That's that top grid. Now, I could adjust and add those two staff salaries back from May if you'd want me to do that, I could do that. And then that would come to, it'd probably be maybe another, it's about five weeks of salary for those staff. So let's just say that brings that 132,600 to 150. Okay, so now I have another 55,600 to tell the department, how are we going to spend that for 2015? So what we did is we looked at all of our 1,000 brass code expenditures for 2014 and we projected what we're going to spend in 2015 just based on increased costs, out-of-home placements and supervised visitations, I knew were way up there. And this was, the 73,000 was the number that we legitimately see our expenditures increasing. So that's what we did. So what I did is I took the 73,000, put it in there and then accounted for all the staffing starting July 1 and beyond because to me that was a good sell for DHS. So that's-
So bottom line, we came out the way we wanted to come out in terms of funding from the state.
And it's very, I have all of the documentation if they want to see how the numbers came out. So it's, it's legitimate use of the funds that they've allocated. The, the question still could remain is that they could look at my statement there and say, well gee, you brought them on in May and we said it's not for any new staff till July 1. Well, we would argue that.
But we didn't hire them until after their decision called for-
Until the governor implemented some changes.
Kevin, you have more?
I just have to ask it one more time. The, the 1,000 brass code.
Yep.
Are those expenditures related to staff?
Uh, no, they're purchase services.
Okay, so, so that goes back to my question. Why don't, why aren't we allowed then to put a 1,000 brass code line item into 2016?
Oh, we are, we are.
But I don't see it.
It's because we're spending all the money on staff.
Right. So we're at our maximum?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's what I needed to know.
Yep.
Because I couldn't understand if we can get it here, why couldn't we get it here?
Yes, yep.
The answer is that we're at our maximum.
Yes, yep. Boy, that was easy. That was a round of all ways.
We got there.
I do have a layout of our 1,000 brass code series if you want to take a look at it and it shows the amounts at the bottom, but it, it kind of lays it out pretty well. A lot of them are out-of-home placement.
Frank, you have a question?
No, I just want to second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Okay.
All right. So then I will have, I'll need a signature on this and then I'll send it in.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, approval to replace office support specialist position due to resignation.
Okay, so we had a resignation last week and this is a position that's down in our income maintenance unit at the front desk for folks coming in and we are just simply seeking to replace this position. We could not function without this position. It's one of our busiest spots in the agency.
I'll move to approve that motion, rather I move to approve that replacement. You want that?
Yes, please say.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Replace social worker position due to retirement.
Okay, we have one of our social workers retiring. She works in our chemical dependency unit. She has been here for 21 years and plans to retire at the beginning of 2016. This is the area in the budget where we had requested an additional .5 position, so this workload area is ever increasing and we just could not function without being able to replace her upon her retirement. So I'm asking for approval to, to do that. I did, I thought this might be an opportunity to, under the cost and funding, to indicate that she's leaving on the top of our grade, grade 17, step 12, and we would anticipate, you know, hiring a social worker at the lower level and whether the board would consider using the budget savings to support the .5 position. But I had Darren run a wage calculation worksheet and with payout of vacation and that, we, we didn't have a lot left, so I was just disappointed. I was hoping we would see more from what I budgeted, but.
Kevin?
So is your plan to hire this replacement for the first of the year?
Um, I was, my hope was that we would do an internal posting because we think we'll have some internal interest and kind of start the process, but we could set the date on whatever the board would approve.
Yeah, because we don't, because we're not budgeted for-
Right, right, right. And my thought would be at, at the latest, we would have them start March.
I mean, it's more than budgeted to have two people paid.
Yeah, right, right. So we could have this position start March 1st. Her, she'll be done January 8th and will carry out her vacation through the end of February. So if, if possible, if we could have the person start in January when her last day is, but we would have that duplicate. She'd have a payout and we'd have the employee.
Yeah, but the, I like the, the goal there is to not see a reduction in the work.
Right.
I mean, a reduction in the staff.
Right, exactly.
Because the work's still going to be there.
Yep, yep, yep. So if the board would approve bringing the person on in January, that would be-
I would move, I would move approval of the replacement with a January hierarchy.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
All right, thank you.
You want to really share?
Yes, all right.
Ryan, we've got a veteran's service officer position update. Good morning.
And members of the commission. Yeah, this is basically an update because on September 1st, we will be bringing this gentleman to you for an appointment to the veteran's service officer position, so I thought it would be only fair to give you his resume and discuss any questions that you may have and talk a little bit about the, the process that we went through. If you are well, all well aware that Tom Veliucci left us as the VSO, as the veteran's service officer, and we, we did put out advertisements, we received 52 applications for that position. We interviewed six last Monday. Two of you folks were on that interview panel. I did have a follow, as, as requested of the committee, I did have a follow-up interview with him last Wednesday morning and I felt you, I felt more comfortable even after the second interview as I did the first, which is a good sign. And so we, we do have a conditional offer to him pending background of the investigation and board approval. So his name is Curtis Cannon and you, you have his resume in front of you. I know, like I said, two of you were on that interview panel if you want to share your opinions or anything with the other members of the board, but it's a very important position to your veterans in the county and to yourselves, so certainly entertain any questions or comments. Individual is, appears to be very well qualified for the position you're seeking.
He does, and yeah, I was very impressed with him, so hopefully everything will work out well and we'll have him on board soon, so Kevin?
Yeah, I, you know, all six had a lot of good, they were all really good candidates, but I think this individual scored first on, we had nine on the committee?
Yes, we did.
Of, eight of the nine of us had him as scoring the highest and, and the, the ninth one actually had him second, so out of, out of the six. So he definitely showed, he came out clearly on top by, by the vast majority of the members.
So that's just for information.
Great.
If, and we'll be bringing him in September 1st, so.
Thank you.
Okay, 2016 budget update and discussion. Ryan Amore.
I, I did hand out a updated sheet. You have it there someplace with you. If you don't, if you got an extra on here, so. I know the third page on there is the one you're always interested in looking at. That is a working paper yet, we all know that, but I just wanted to keep you guys as informed as we possibly can as we move forward on this. It's your budget that you'll have to approve and I just made some notes on the front page there and we can, we can run through those. Much of this information you've seen before, but you have new requests in there. You have motor vehicle, you have the county attorney's office, which is going to be presenting later on. He is asking for an additional person. The sheriff's office has been before you and you've already approved that position for 2016 corrections. You approved that halftime position. She had a halftime position that was vacant and she combined it for one full-time position. You approved that last time. Technology services is asking for some overtime dollars and I, I believe, yes, he has been before you and I think that is a wise investment. He's been asking for more people, more people, and I think this is a good alternative to it. Social services is asking for a halftime position. Out-of-home placement, public health is asking for a .6 FTE and that is fully funded by county dollars if you decide to approve it. And then family services, some additional on-call dollars. There, there's really not too much on the other items, although the insurance costs are in. Insurance costs for the county share of it next year, 504,000, $1,444. And as our chair pointed out this morning, that is half of the increase, so it is a million-dollar increase to our program, to a lot of dollars.
Second year in a row.
Yes, mm-hmm. Second year in a row. County program aid, you had that information last week. MCIT dividends, you had last, last week. Jail construction, unanticipated, has been removed on this sheet, the $25,000, certainly up to you if you want that in there or not. We did not have it in there last year. The rebate dollars for housing starts, we had placed $200,000, or Lori had for the rebates of the new construction. I think you know the program there, so we won't go into that. That has been removed from the request last year. You made the decision to handle that with reserves, so that has been removed. Public health, 24, 2014 revenues over expenditures, it's been a normal practice of Clay County to apply the revenues over expenditures from the year before. And if you remember right, last year was a pretty good year. They received some additional revenue dollars and that was a total of $430,977. That has been applied to the, the information sheet, I'll say. Points to be considered for next week, we were thinking that if, we should probably review the new requests. I think there's, as you'll see on that summary sheet, there's still $315,179 that are new requests in there. Two of those entries are the sheriff's office and the corrections, so there will be certainly something left in there. And then you have the county attorney coming before you this morning to ask for an additional position. But we thought maybe we would go back and review those with your direction, to go back and review those new requests. Review fund balances for consideration. Last year you did obligate- I know we always look for that to see where we're at and hopefully now with seven months passed, I'd give you an update about three months ago. Yes, we'll try to update you the best we can on that. And then just, just for your observation, if you look on that summary sheet, you'll see that currently you're looking at a two-point-one million dollar increase in the levy. And there's six items on there that I pointed out that really take a big chunk of that. Last year you used four hundred thousand dollars worth of reserves. That's not taken out this year, so that is in there. A new request of three hundred and fifteen thousand. That two percent COLA that we've placed in the budget is four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Health insurance is five hundred and four thousand. Out of county boarding of prisoners that Julie presented in the corrections budget, additional two hundred thousand dollars, that's quite a jump. And out of home placement, we talked a little bit more about it this morning with Rhonda, out of home placement, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those six items total to over two million dollars. So just food for thought. Now, that does not paint the whole picture. I'm not trying to, trying to say that it is, because there are increases in revenues that come in in certain departments. Motor Vehicles, one of them, for example, she's going to be asking for additional position, but you'll see that the revenue is up considerably from their fees at different things. It's the same with, with Public Health and it's the same with Social Services. So revenues have changed somewhat, but my purpose in pointing this out is these six items are big, big-ticket items, so. Anyway, Mr. Chair, that's kind of concludes my update.
Any questions? Kevin?
Yeah, I want to, I want to go to the motor vehicle for a minute. Last, last year, we added one last year as well, right?
Correct.
And in doing that, we did it because the revenues justified it.
Right.
Increased revenues. At some point in time, I mean, our revenues are based on renewals.
Right.
Or new people moving in.
Yeah, this, this position I'm actually requesting is for the driver's license side only.
Okay.
And so we've had more and more people coming in for, on the driver's license side, so the lines seem to be longer on that side than on the motor vehicle side.
Okay, right.
This position's for driver's licenses, we would have two at all times.
Right.
Right now, we sometimes have two, you know, depending on how busy the other side is, so that's what we're looking for.
In addition to that, haven't we had, haven't we had a, like a floater, a part-time position there too?
Right, we've had a person that's an accounting tech in the auditor's office go over there Thursday and Friday afternoons, and she helps working in driver's licenses.
Do you suppose, do you suppose that to help our budget to some degree, we could, we could, and so what is it, like a .2 or .3 or something?
Point two, because if .8 has an accounting tech and a .2 over there.
Do you suppose that we could, we could just take that .2 and move that to a 1? I mean, wouldn't, would that, that'd save us a little bit on our budget and then just have, just a full-time person there and then not have that .2 there?
That's a possibility, yeah.
Could we look at that?
Yeah, we could certainly look at that, yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm trying to figure out every way we can to get this down to...
Right, yeah, we can certainly look at that. I can...
Does that accounting tech need a full-time though?
Right now, it's a public health accounting tech and, you know, we have four county consortiums now, so we're just finishing up with half of, half a year of that, so we've been trying to determine how much time that does take.
Okay.
And it, you know, the year-end things take a little bit longer, so she wasn't out there during that time, so for February, March, April, the .2 portion wasn't out at motor vehicle very much at all, so.
I guess I would just at least like that to be looked at, to see if that could, I mean, it's .2, but it's still saving.
Right.
Frank? Did you say that the lines are longer and stuff, or that we have, is their waiting time longer?
The drivers, yeah, the driver's license side, so, I mean, they've got, they can have thirty people standing in line. I was actually out there, we were looking at some signage for motor vehicle and somebody came in and, it was pump-full in there, pump-full, but somebody came in and a couple minutes later they came out and thought, well, that went really fast. Well, they came in to go to the motor vehicle side, so the motor vehicle, motor vehicle side was flowing nicely, but the driver's license side had thirty people in line because we only had one person that day.
And that's the part where they do their eye test and all that, or even...
Right, the driver's license renewal, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was just wanting to, like, to say that the revenue's up, because the revenue's up, we need more people, well...
Well, we have more transactions coming in.
Well, this is true, but if we're staying up to date on them, or the lines aren't that long, we're okay, you know, it's good that revenue's up.
Right.
That doesn't mean we need more people because revenue's up, but...
We actually do on the driver's license side because we need two people there all the time rather than just on occasion.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, that is, those new requests are what we'll go through this next week and hopefully come back if, if that is what you would like us to do, because we'd like to do things with your support and approval.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brian? The other Brian, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brian.
Thanks for seeing me. Sorry about last week. That summer cold flu deal is not fun. It's not, not quite going away either. Well, if you want me to begin, I am, I'm requesting an additional position as well as Brian already mentioned within his, I'm looking for an additional legal assistant. As you may recall, last year I came before the board, asked for a new attorney and the board granted that, appreciate it. We started him as of July, we hired as of July, and Steve Beelsbacher, who was a former public defender, is now working for us and he's doing a great job, he's going to be a great addition to the team, so. If you recall, when I came before the board last time, I did have numbers that I provided, I didn't put them into a packet this time again, but if you look at our numbers compared to, say, Otter Tail and Becker, we're, we're double what Becker does numbers-wise, we're about a third higher than what Otter Tail does. We really have not looked to increase positions over the last eight years, really due to budget constraints, we really tried to keep the, keep the budget tight and not add anything, but I did look, really we needed to add additional attorney. At the same time, we really could have used, even at that time, I wasn't going to come before the board and try to ask for both a attorney and a legal secretary at the same time, but our workloads are increasing and legal assistants are the primary people that are processing everything and keeping things moving through it, you know, what the attorneys are doing. We still continue to have that large volume. I know just as everybody's talking about the Social Services or Sheriff's Department asking for more, but those are the people that we're also working with and doing a lot of work with. I did do just a little bit of number crunching to kind of help move, or at least kind of help spur some discussion. Crow Wing County, which is a population of sixty-two thousand, they have nine legal assistants. Otter Tail County, fifty-seven thousand population, eight legal assistants. Rice County, sixty-four, seven hundred population, they have eight legal assistants. We currently have five legal assistants, we have one paralegal and then I have an office front person, part-time, so if you really count all that and say even seven, two of those are paid for through our contract with the Morehead, the Morehead prosecution contract. So really the county is paying for five, and so I just would point that out. I mean, I think we're, we're pretty, we've kept it pretty tight. We have had even six previously, about eight years ago, we had a sixth person when, when she ultimately resigned, I didn't look to fill that, but we're really at a point, I think, that we need it. I mean, when you work to get as much out of everybody, but at a certain point, I think you start to lose, you lose workability and then it's about balance and trying to find how much you can get out of everybody and what things you, what things you put on the back burner, that kind of thing. I think that's really where we're at. We're at that, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to say crisis mode, I don't want to put it like that, but we're definitely at a point where people are feeling the impacts of having a really heavy workload and coming to me and saying, I just can't do this and how do we, you know, where do we prioritize? And so I think that's where you come to a point and say, okay, it's time to look and ask for another additional position. So that's what I put into my budget. I think it is reasonable. I think if you compare it to like-sized counties, we're actually pretty low, and so I just thought I'd give that information to the board as well.
Thank you. Questions for Brian?
Mr. Chair?
Kevin, you must have a question.
Sure, I do. I know you have tough decisions too, because I know everybody wants new people, so.
No, I, you know, I'm here at the end after Brian did his whole presentation. I guess, and you kind of touched on where I wanted to go with this little bit, and that's the contract with Morehead and, and so we have a contract for the two attorneys?
So the contract for Morehead, for the city services, they, they pay for two attorneys and two legal assistants.
Okay. When was the last time that was reviewed?
So we review it every, really we, we're in the process of doing again, usually it's a two-year contract. It's up again, and so...
My, my, my point is, 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 you know, is, you know, in fairness to the entire county, is, is some of, is some of this demand that's happening...
City of Moreheads?
Yeah.
I think if you look...
Do you have a way to determine that?
I mean, we could probably look at that and there's a way to determine, but I would say this, when we've looked at it and the way that they pay for two attorneys and two legal secretaries, if you truly look at those numbers, they, they're paying a good portion. They've, they've paid a reasonable portion and we've never, we've never declined that when we had kind of our austere years and we really scaled back, we didn't add anything. We didn't, we didn't draw back from the City of Morehead contract. We always kept them paying two attorneys, two legal secretaries. So if you really look at it that way, we've, we've, they've, they've maintained a consistency over the last ten years of that same thing. We've never added as far as building to continue to, on the county side and the numbers that are there.
But I mean, they're constantly adding more cops, those cops must be doing something.
Well, that's true. Well, the cops are doing something, but, but it's also county stuff.
Which, which leads to...
Yeah, which, right. If you look at it, I mean, if you say like, what's, say DWI, one of the things, the way the contract works, we don't designate and just say, these people only work on city work.
Right.
And so if you look at kind of all combination between, say, DWIs versus burglaries versus more serious things, it would still be county employees. I mean, there's probably ways to do that, but I don't think at this point it would be prudent or really would be correct to try to say there's more on the cities.
That's, that's, that's fine, I just, I had to ask the question.
Sure.
Well, it's a fair question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just to respond a bit to, to Commissioner Campbell's concern, those numbers that Mr. Melton is citing for the other counties and how many people they have employed, most counties do not do city work, so those are strictly county numbers. If we're comparing county to county, we're, I mean, extremely lower than others similarly-sized counties, so I, I agree that I don't think the workload from Morehead is the issue, it's more so the increased demands. And two that I see in the work that I do, you know, Rhonda Porter has been here several times asking for child protection workers, chemical dependency workers, adult protection workers, anytime you add those staff in Social Services...
Some argument, yeah.
They bring more to my civil division in child protection cases, civil commitments, adult protection matters. So that, we've seen a huge incline in the civil side. And then also one thing that I'm not sure if the commissioners are, if we've come and spoke about this before, but Clay County has been and will continue to be a pilot county for the e-file and serve program through court administration, so now when we open any case or we attempt to file into any case, we have to do that all electronically. There's no more handing paper to the court. It used to be you'd write a motion, you'd sign it, you'd throw it in the court's basket and you'd be done with it. Now we have to write the motion, sign the motion, scan the motion, save the motion, then attach it to the e-file system, and all that makes for additional time, and that's directly attributable to the support staff. That's the work they do. And so the concerns, I've heard many concerns from support staff is, you know, we have the same, if not more, workload and we're being asked to do more steps multiple times on each filing, so all that creates more time and, and really requires more staff to get the same amount of work done. Now hopefully in the long term, we reach an equilibrium where that all works out and it becomes more efficient with the electronic filing, but at this, you know, early stage, it really is demanding a lot more from the people that are filing the documents.
I think Jenny brings up a good point, I was gonna, if needed, be going to that part, that the electronic part where what he kind of claims that as we go into the paperless world and get more electronic pieces that it saves time, we're not really seeing that at this point. A lot of it is, it's more just redistributing the way the workload goes. So sometimes some of the stuff that, say, court used to do, they've now said, well, the computer doesn't allow us to do that, you need to do that, so it's pushed in a different direction, now we have to prepare some of the things that the court used to just take care of. It's, it's kind of an interesting thing. We're not seeing a really a huge time-saving effect. In fact, at this point, we're seeing more work largely. That's just what Jenny said, you hear a lot of, oh, boy, we, we have to do this, this and this that we never had to do before. So the electronic piece is something that's, there's good things to it, there's some things we'll have to get used to and changes over time, so that is, that is another piece of the workload.
Okay, thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Brian?
Just one observation too. The, the county attorney's office shows a revenue line, other than taxes, of the city, which you just talked about, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, but also they receive two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from Social Services for all of their work, and maybe that's not enough either, or maybe that has to be looked at too, but they show a lot of revenue coming in because they do a lot of services for other agencies.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Good to see you. Okay, Brian, we got your update now, so.
Oh, okay.
That's all we have left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first, Kevin Kastenberg from Soil and Water contacted me yesterday and wanted me to let you folks know that you can do a little pre-planning, hopefully September tenth, Soil and Water will have their fall tour, tour, so you can kind of plan for that if you'd like. He said invitations will be coming out. The soil, or Solid Waste, after last Tuesday's board meeting, Commissioner Campbell and, and Commissioner Wayland and I met with Kirk from Solid Waste, just to update on what was going on and some of the plans and how it's progressing and different things along those lines. We also had a meeting last week. Commissioner Wayland and myself met with Social Services and a few members of their staff met with a couple of the funeral directors in the area, reference county burials and the expenses and the costs that are associated with that. They're, of course, asking for some increases, they haven't any increase since two thousand and three, I think they said, on the fee itself. They've been reimbursed for the products, but not the fee of preparation and, and things themselves, so we had quite a discussion in regards to that. The, we talked about the zoning budget and I know last time we had a question on the zoning budget of why the expenses had gone up quite a bit and the revenues had gone up as well, I think it was Commissioner Mordell pointed that out, and that's because of the aquatic invasive species dollars that are coming in, so the dollars increased and that's why the expenses had increased as well. But I wanted you folks to be clear on that. I had the follow-up interview, I already mentioned that, the VSO, your Holly City Council, I was out there Wednesday night with a couple of your commissioners, which I thought went really well. We had the juvenile center budget review. Steve just really keeps things on track over there and Lori and I think we're really pleased with his presentation. Land management, that's been discussed in, in length in regards to the hardship and the Shisago County discussion. I kind of updated you on that just a little bit. And Mike Redlinger from the city and I spent about a half hour on the phone Friday morning talking about the jail and also the law enforcement center and different things in regards to that, so the city, I think, is staying up to speed as well as it can be. We had the juvenile center budget review. Steve just really keeps things on track over there, and Lori and I think we're really pleased with his presentation. Land management, that's been discussed in length in regards to the hardship and the Shisago County discussion. I kind of updated you on that just a little bit. And Mike Redlinger from the city, and I spent about a half hour on the phone Friday morning talking about the jail and also the law enforcement center and different things in regards to that. So the city, I think, is staying up to speed as well as it can be. Had a meeting with Jennifer Williams over, and VSO, and reference to scheduling and how the qualifications and trainings will take place. And then we had the jail mental health committee. And I think Commissioner Gross covered that quite well, and so did Commissioner Mojo. But I think the issue there that we are confronted with is that there are, there's so much programming that is going on at the jail, and that needs to go on at the jail in order to reintegrate these people back into society. And not necessarily to get them the help they need, but to steer them in the right path and having the right resources, and then having the facilities to have the group meetings and different things. So it does tie in with the building. But man, we've had our second meeting, and we're realizing how big of an issue this is. And I think that's what Commissioner Gross was talking about. This is, this is really covers some ground and really needs some good thought. So making some good progress there. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay, anything else? No, just going back to the jail issue, you know, I think what we, another thing we found out, you know, that how much services do you provide? You know, I mean, if you start providing all kinds of services, you know, then some of these other things, like in the hospitals and stuff like that, they're, send people to us or whatever, you know, I mean, it's just, I mean, how much services do we really provide for, for the prisoners, you know? And I think we have to be careful on not overdoing it, too, you know? I mean, it's just, we got to be adequate, you know, but we, I think that our states and stuff like that, our hospitals, still provide some of the services that we may need.